Order the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education, September 8th, 2021. Start with the plugging. By the way, this is by the United States. And this is very popular, which is one way. Another way. And it was literally made just like. Mr. Dorn, remember, and welcome to, uh, Mr. Dune.
I can just make you raise your right hand.
I, Joseph Femen, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a member of the Oneonta City School District Board of Education, according to the best my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Crowe.
Here.
Mrs. Birdsby.
Here.
Mrs. Kirkowski.
Here.
Mr. Beckeray.
Here.
Mr. Geister.
Here.
Mr. Iannelli.
Here.
Mr. Tummy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you might notice that a member of our family is missing. He had a family emergency, and, um, we insisted that he go through that. Son's having surgery, so, um, send him all our good thoughts and prayers, uh, as he goes through that. Resolved to accept the agenda as amended?
Zoomed.
Okay.
All favor.
Hi.
I'd like to.
Post. Thank you. Resolved to accept the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
I can.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd like.
Post. Sentences?
Here.
Thank you. Resolved to accept the minutes of the August 18th, 2020 special meeting as presented? So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm tied for it.
Post. Sentences? This brings us to our first opportunity to address the board. Uh, for anyone attending via Zoom, there's a, uh, QA function in there that you can put your comment in before we do. And we'll say that the privilege of speaking from the floor is extended to any person in attendance. Anyone desiring to speak should give their name and address, and we will be limited to three minutes for the presentation. Uh, the time each speaker may be adjusted by the chair, and the speaker's term of privilege may be, uh, terminated by the chair if found out of order. Anyone in present that'd like to make a comment? Alright, there will be another period. I know I kind of dropped that on the people online if there's anyone there. There's another one coming up later on the agenda. Resolved that the reading of the non-certificated personnel memorandum, 2021 dash 14 be waived, and that the, and the addendum be waived, that the action items dated September 8th, 2021, be approved as recommended by the superintendent schools. So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to.
Post. Sentences? Resolved that the reading of the teaching administrative personnel memorandum, 2021 dash 14, and the addendum be waived, and that the action items dated September 8th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent schools. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd like.
Post. Sentences? Thank you. Um, we're going to move this to the superintendent's report. We don't have a capital project update, but we do have Mr. Rossard from Durham Bus Services here, um, and he's going to give us a transportation update.
Well, uh, you want me to turn it around? I apologize. I did have a little bit of a power point. I love to share. Sitting at the center of the conference, I don't have a microphone. I can sit down afterward. Is this okay?
Sure.
Yeah. I'm just going to use it for my purposes, if that's okay.
That makes sense.
Um, and first of all, thank you very much for, for having me here this evening. You know, Tom and I have been, uh, communicating quite a bit lately, obviously, with regard to getting everything ready for the first day of school. We've had a lot of challenges, obviously, last year. I mean, we really let you guys down. Been working very hard to try to, um, you know, get the right people into the operation. We started with several folks that we, we brought in at, uh, we wanted to give an opportunity to show that, that they could do, uh, what they weren't doing with the previous provider. Uh, that didn't work out, so it took us a little time to get that straightened out. We had some of the people brought in, but also didn't work out. Right now, with regard to our admin staff, um, we have a general manager that will be starting on the 20th. Uh, he is a retired state trooper. Uh, don't ask me where. I wish I could remember what he told me. But, uh, um, so he'll, he'll be a big candidate, we think. He's got a lot of history, a lot of background, um, in, you know, submitting people and things of that nature. Uh, we have a, uh, safety transportation supervisor on staff now. He is also a well-seasoned, uh, veteran in the school transportation business. He came from, uh, first student, but he was Durham School Services prior years. Um, so he's, he's now on the ground and he's working through, uh, things, making sure that we've got the right, uh, protocols in place and everything for safety, including everything related to special needs, ensuring you have the right seats on the buses, wheelchair parties, things of that nature. Uh, with regard to dispatch, uh, we're still transitioning through some things there. That's, that's part of one of the challenges that we're dealing with, uh, here now. Um, you know, there, there are a lot of things outside of Oneonta that, that, you know, obviously we see on the news all the time, like regarding driver shortages. I'd like to say that we're not a hundred percent hit here. Um, we've got a small little issue with that. Uh, we have, to date, if I recall, let me look at this here. Uh, we have 18 routes that will be running tomorrow. We have 16 drivers that are Oneonta drivers, with the other two routes covered with some supplemental drivers. We have one driver who, we're just waiting on him to go get his physical. So that's a very simple thing with the physical. So there were about, we have two drivers that are off with medical issues. One has to take CPAP tests, which takes seven days, and they just got their CPAP, uh, kit yesterday. Um, so that takes seven days, and the other one's having heart surgery, so they're coming back. And then we have our, our sub-driver, one of our sub-drivers, uh, you guys might know him, uh, Mr. Gracie, and he's on vacation this week, um, so unfortunately we don't have him, uh, for, for the start of school. So staffing wise, we're, we're very tight. Uh, we will get things done. Um, but it's just for clear transparency, there will be some pickups tomorrow. Uh, we're going to work through those. Uh, I'll be on the ground. I'll be at the schools where I can be to make sure that we communicate. As a matter of fact, uh, Kevin and I were speaking on the way in about special needs students being dropped off at the back of the building because of steps, uh, some things with some bosies runs and some other items that we need to make sure that we communicate about. One of the things that we're bringing in this year that we, one of the bring in last year, uh, is our app, which is a Durham Bus Tracker. So I know parents receive notification, uh, that they would be able to get into the app to view their students. That will go live tonight, so we usually wait until we've got all the students that we have for school before we roll that out because, um, we don't want to have to re-upload it in this stuff. So that will go live, and that's what I was doing on the hallway is talking about our IT books to make sure that was going through tonight. So tomorrow morning, in addition, obviously, the route's been posted. They'll be able to pull up their student, student ID and see what time to stop this, and also be able to track our ETA. Obviously, this has additional benefits outside of just the first day of school. In the event of bad weather, they're not standing out in cold lawn. Uh, if there's an accident and the bus is running late, they can see that, those types of things, um, all, all benefit them. Um, so that's, that's one of the things that we're hoping will certainly help, uh, with the first day of school. Some of the other things that, you know, we were dealing with right now is, um, we, we looked at how we were going to, uh, address the routes this year and we're getting more work done, so it's probably, and it didn't go as quickly as possible. So we have been asking last month, we haven't seen communication go out yet for routes. That's why it's happening today and not last week. Um, so we will make sure that that communication is constant for today or for tomorrow and then Friday, obviously, next week, to make sure those things are changing and we're getting through some of those challenges that it's, it's being, uh, adjusted as quickly as we possibly can. You know, the, uh, the other item that we have that's, uh, accessible to parents is there's a, uh, an item called Bus Report. It's just busreport.com. It's a website we hope that they can go in, they can log complaints or compliments if they want to. Um, and it goes right to the general manager, and it's all logged and it's all escalated. So the GM gets to, uh, report to it. If it's not resolved, it goes to the RM, and it goes to the MCA Vice President. So there's a, there's a, uh, a log of that. But, but again, um, you know, we're really hoping that, that tomorrow will, will go well, but I, I come up here and I tell you I'm fairly certain there are going to be some pickups, and then Tom and I have been talking about that today, so, um, you know, I, I apologize, but I'm ahead of time. We'll work hard to make sure we correct it. I know that we've, we've got a lot of work to, uh, earn your trust. And then, like I said last year, um, we had some, some challenges, um, the, the transition staff, some of the shortages and misses on our side, um, didn't go well, and we don't want to continue that. Um, and we will, we will fix it, so, um, with that, I, I'll take questions in the inner, I don't know if you'd like to discuss your comment on it. Yes?
Um, how will parents be able to get information in real time tomorrow?
In real time?
Yeah.
So through the app, uh, they, they can see the, the bus route, so they can, they can log on to the app through their phone, and it'll tell them the, the, the route time, when it's supposed to drop, the route name. So it'll, it'll identify two ways, one by the bus number and by the characters, Eeyore, uh, Tweedy Bird, or whatever the, the different ones are, the bowling ball, I think, this is that mess. Um, but, but they're on there, so they'll be able to see that. And then what it is, is you, have you ever used Uber?
Yes.
So it's, it's similar to Uber. I mean, it doesn't say your driver's on his way, but you know how you can see the little car? Same thing. You see a little bus just ticking along, down, anywhere it's going to be. It says an ETA like, you know, 10 minutes, 5 minutes, 3 minutes, so you'll see that. So that's, that's the real time, uh, information that they'll get.
I do know that some people were having difficulty over the weekend trying, when they were putting the student ID in.
Yes.
Should say.
The information wasn't there.
Not popular.
Yeah, the information was not popular. I was literally just doing it out in the hallway.
Okay.
Uh, so no, yeah, we know.
What time will that be populated?
Uh, it should be tonight. Um, when I get an email, when I get an email from him, um, it should be immediately. I can probably tell you before we leave the meetings.
Okay, that'll be great.
Um, but yeah, I was, I was getting that information out of him since he were, all he had to do was take the, the asset numbers and the, the vehicle names and marry them up to the, the data in the system and, and it should populate, so. Um, but it'll be good to go. I'll make sure I let you guys know.
Do you foresee any issues with extracurricular stuff like after, after normal bus days? We have to get athletics out to, you know, schools. I know that was a big issue last year, getting drivers to do those out-of-town runs after bus drives.
That's a great question. You know, I'm, I'm really hoping that with some of the changes that we've seen down there and what we've had against the transition drivers as well, that we're getting a mix of people that want to do additional work. Um, you know, we do obviously some additional work with regard to the county work out of there, so we have some other drivers that do county work that can take on that as well. Um, I, I wish I could say yes for certain. I just, I don't have that answer.
What was the biggest hangup for that last year? You just didn't have the drivers that were willing to do the extra work?
Correct.
Or you didn't have the driver, or you didn't have the drivers, period?
Yes, and so there's a couple of different pieces to that. There are folks that don't want to do the extra work. Um, and then there's the folks that just didn't, didn't come to work. You know, I, I know you all, like I said, seen the news, the national news. In New York State, um, across all school districts, contractors, you know, about 15 to 20% of drivers will never come back. They decided that they were retired from the business, and they were just doing it for, you know, the sake of getting extra money, and they decided they don't want to have that hassle. Now, we've got another, I think it's 20, 29% that are in that unemployment category. You know, they just, they decided that they're going to wait it out. And in that category, there's a piece of those folks that are very hesitant to come back because they don't know the school's going to shut down. So they have a job, maybe 12, 50, 15 bucks an hour, and when we offer, you know, 20, $21 an hour, they're afraid that they come to work in six weeks or whatever if COVID becomes a problem and schools go virtual, they're without a job. Um, so they're waiting on the sidelines for that change, which is, is just, we're trying, everything's to begin, and the sign-on bonuses and everything else to get those folks out. Um, it's just they're, they're very nervous about what, what they, uh, could, could lose, so.
How will the, um, the, the, once the app is populated, how will that information be communicated to our families as well as route information?
So, well, let me, let me clarify that. So we, I know we notified parents that the route's red today. We sent the information to Tom, and then he posted the website, and I'm fairly certain that something went out as we started giving phone calls about a couple of different things. Um, so that, that will continue to evolve if roads change. Um, every night, when, if, let's say, you're, you call in, you have a, a route change, your move or what have you, or something like that. When we input in the system that night, all that information gets downloaded, gone back to the, to the bus tracker system. So we, we notify parents of their scene. Once we have a stop, then we call them, we tell them anyway. So it's not just, okay, hey, you know, we've got a new student. Once we have that routed, we call that parent and say, hi, so you know you're on fumble beam at this time. So, and you'll be able to see it in the app as well, so we can tell them at that time.
I'm assuming that that's why Colleen asked for questions, so that as soon as you have uploaded everything tonight, uh, someone can, uh, notify all our parents, be our parents where, that they can check, kind of look at the app that they've already signed up for.
Yes. Yep, and the special needs students, we called all those parents directly this evening. So we, we took two folks in the office, and just because of, obviously, um, you know, the delicacy within, we decided we're obviously going to do another touch point with them, and we called all those correctly, so.
I just have another concern and question. Um, when you're trying the app, because we sent the app information out, um, a couple of days ago, it now tells you, because parents have been trying, and it says, you know, no records found or whatever. It's now saying that because you've attempted so many times, it's disabled for eight hours. So if a parent has been trying over the last couple of days, like I have done, just kind of as a test, now the error says disabled because of multiple unsuccessful ad student tests. So it's, parents are going to have a conviction because now it says again in eight hours, which is, you know, I, I don't know if there's a way to reset that.
That's what I'm going to check, yep.
Um, but yeah.
Sorry, you said that your, that the employees are calling specialized students?
Well, the parents.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
What's going to stay with those notifications, hey?
Uh, just before 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, it's literally, I think we started right before, before 15 or so.
We sent letters out a couple of weeks from, from, from the office, and I called earlier today.
Okay.
That's not the message I received. I was told that parents would be to call when they have questions.
Okay, Tom, Tom sent me a text message, told me I needed to talk about those.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm sorry.
Actually, yeah.
What issue did come up is, uh, in the summer school, and which we had fixed. The time was a certain time, the bus involved earlier than it's gone on. You know, the bus is not due to be earlier, earlier on a route, because that's a domino effect, and it impact the rest of the route. It's 7:15, and the student isn't there, they can either wait for the rest if they go then, but it's earlier for the next student and so forth, so what is that going to work out?
That's a great question, um, and I, obviously, I would have a slide on this. One of the things that we do as a company, um, that wasn't followed, sorry about that, that one round, I'll talk about possibly others, is we track on-time performance. So everything we do, everything is tracked with GPS. Every bus has a Zonar GPS unit. We have a, uh, an interface called Zonar ETA, you know, round-tracker, GTA, uh, GKT, whatever, sorry. And, um, in that, we can see exactly when the bus stops, when it engages its doors, when it pulls on its lights, how long it waits, when it stops, or riding, we get a ton of data that we can see at all times. And we pull that information out into the KPI dashboard and lets us know that our drivers are stopping at the right time, engaging, waiting for a specific period of time, uh, and then moving forward. Because when it comes to the first day of school, what we do is we route everything. So we, we sent out a survey asking if there's anybody that doesn't want transportation. Um, and we take that information into account, but other than that, we route everything. And what we'll do is in a week or two, we'll come back and we'll ask the drivers, looking at their route sheets, who's been writing, who hasn't, and we'll adjust the route accordingly based on who is, who is not writing. But in order for that all to work, we have to be at those stops at specific times, engaged for a specific time, and move on. Because if I don't, like you said, I'm going to start being early until I make those changes. So, um, so I do, yeah, I do understand what you're saying, but they, we are tracking that because it's important to us, um, on every level, so.
Clearly something demanding the phone tomorrow, because even though they, you're saying it's going to be on the tracker, people are, you know, we already know that we have connectivity issues anyway, but if people, people are going to want to know immediately why their child hasn't been picked up or what is going on. So will the phones be manned at the route for us?
So we, we will not pull any staff members out of the facility to run any routes, um, so those people will stand there. I will have handheld radio, and I'll be at schools where I can be, obviously, where they can click that. But I'll do my best to be where I can. So if there's any issues on site, I can radio in as well, uh, but yes, that they will be.
If I can just keep you back on that, the district office was flooded with phone calls today. Switched for the superintendent's office, the people that were trying to get through and were not able to reach Durham today. So that's not going to be the case tomorrow.
Well, I mean, we only have five lines. That's the biggest challenge we have. I mean, if I've got five people on those sidelines, I can't, uh, you know, answer anymore because it's not ringing per se. But, but there will be people there to answer the lines.
And there is a voicemail appearance to be noticed.
Yes. Yes.
So in your opening speech, you mentioned that you were searching for a dispatcher, so is there a full-time dispatcher at this time?
So there's a lady by the name of Malika King, um, who is a seasoned dispatcher from our Waterford CSC. So she's been coming down every day for quite some time now. She's been very, she actually designed several of the routes. We were trying to finish some things up here the last week, um, but she's going to stay in place until we find our IP in the, the back of the location. Yeah, for what? Um, first of all, I would say thank you for coming down, because what we have last year, obviously, what we don't see doesn't get in this year. And I, and that was your first comment. I really appreciate that. And what I'm hearing, that we have some, um, submissions, and I'm afraid it's going to happen again tomorrow. And like Reggie's saying, tomorrow morning, that phone call, the phone, they're going to be ringing out the hub, and they're not going to get through, and they're not going to get through, and things are going to get backed up. Yes, the students will eventually get to school, but we have a lot of upset parents. And unfortunately, we're the ones getting the answer for it, then it comes back to you because you're the stand-up guy who came from Edler's or that type of office that answered these questions. How many times have we had a practice run? I'm, I'm seeing air in front of me while these pickups and drop-offs in the last three, four weeks. Have you been doing practice runs? Are the, are all these drivers ready to do this? So you have enough drivers in the morning to handle all this? Yes. Okay. We haven't been doing dry runs. As a matter of fact, they were doing dry runs, uh, place once in yesterday, because obviously we were still finishing a few things, so. We've been, the only, the only items that, that changed in the past, we had a stack of, you know, changes that we were working on and that we're still working on right now, that will affect some of those routes. We've changed because of what the survey gave us, you know, or parents still calling in, asking for, for changes. Right. Um, you know, some of them, we added on this district office, we can't change that. Try to stop, talking to you guys. No, I didn't. Um, but the, the ones that we can't field, where we're working through, we just got to get that done. We call the parents at those times when we get those. Uh, but yes, there, we've got folks that have done dry runs. You know, I'm, I'm very hopeful that tomorrow is a pretty decent day. I have a couple decent calls. I actually, um, you know, I, I was in, I've been muted the last few days, and we're 50% short on records there. 124 routes and we're at 62 deliveries. Um, it's, it's very, very challenging for driver recruiting and everything else. Um, so I'm hopeful that obviously with what we have here, that we're not going to see major issues, um, especially with the fact that a lot of the driver, you guys have our longtime drivers of the district. So, um, they, they do know the kids and what, my, so it does help a lot.
Well, I, I appreciate you coming down also, and I know you know this, but we really had high hopes, and, um, we're, we're still hopeful. We want to, you know, we want to make sure that this works and that we're able to, you know, get our kids, obviously, where they need to be, when they need to be there, and get them there safely. Um, this clearly has our attention and, uh, and everyone, so we really hope that it's successful. We understand the first couple of days are going to be what their old job. And, you know, we, we always have people that see buses and go, oh, school's starting. I better register my kid. So, you know, we understand that, for, you know, the next couple of weeks, we really, really hope that we get things smoothed out and, um, that we don't have to see it.
You don't.
No, we don't have to.
Right.
We'd love to. We don't want to.
Fair, fair.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much. It was fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get back to working on routes, and I'll, uh, I'll just send you if you know if that's okay, if I have a problem with the bus tracker. Is that okay?
Uh, yes.
I have a problem.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I mean, I'll, I'll be back to your work on it.
All right, let's move to this business manager's report. Resolved that the reading of financial memorandum, 2021 dash 12 be waived, and that the action, financial action items dated September 8th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Oh.
Second. Discussion.
Uh, yes, so the first thing you see on there is the, um, adjustment to the tax or CRA reserve. We usually adjust that, um, at the end of every June, which we did at the end of June. But since then, we've had, um, a pretty significant amount come in, so we want to, um, just make sure that we're getting, getting that reserved to where it needs to be right now, that we're some pretty big ones. Um, so we are doing an adjustment that we don't normally do at this time of year. Um, the tax rate and comparison sheet is there for your information, and that just kind of shows the, you know, the differences. Um, you know, although our, our levy went up 0.39, you can see that it doesn't, it's not a standard across the board, 0.39, because there are a lot of factors. Um, and I know that's hard, you know, to understand, but there was a change in equalization, so the town went up more than it, you know, than some other municipalities would. Um, if there's a change in the percent that that, you know, um, municipality makes up, then, you know, they either go up or down at a different rate. So anyway, you can compare to last year and kind of see where we are with that, where some, like the city went down. Um, the town went up, so it's not just a standard across the board. And then we have all our UEP pay contracts with our, um, providers outside, and that we, our grant funds flow through us, and then they go to our community partners. Um, another donation from Valley View, their PTO is very generous. Um, this is for headphones. The natural gas agreement is just an annual bid that we, um, participate with bosies. And then there are some team orders there. One is for the, you know, current big capital project, and the other one is, um, for the work that was done down at the bus garage. And once they took, you know, a couple layers off, there were some issues by some of the, um, the grates and things like that. So we had a choice to either fix it right while they had it apart, or, you know, they could patch it together again, and then it would be a problem later. But we saved a pretty significant amount of money on some of the other areas of the project, and we want to do it right anyway, so that's what that was about. There was something underneath the, the grade that they didn't expect. Um, cross-contracts with communities, if we have space in our programs, um, you know, our specialized programs are really good, then, um, other districts can participate if there's space, so.
Any questions? All in favor?
I'd like.
Post. Sentences? That brings us to our second opportunity to address the board. Are there any comments in the room? Anyone in the audience?
Anyone in the audience? Brings us to our round table, and Sarah Sue.
Um, I just want to welcome Joe. And just that, you know, the Brinley family, Patrick, personally with you, that everything goes well and deals quickly. And I just want to just welcome everyone tomorrow. Beyond a difference. That's all I have.
Okay. I just want to say I'm excited to be here, thank you. And just got to, to set it up. That's a lot of the Brinleys and entire staff and all of us.
Yeah? Welcome, Joe.
Thanks, Tech, from Durham. Good luck tomorrow and for the rest of the year. Hopefully, things run, you know, smoothly. And to the Brinley family, and then Tom, and Patrick, good luck with surgery, and hopefully everything comes out okay with that. And good luck to all of our staff and students tomorrow, getting started for 2021, 22. That's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Mick, and I just want to say, we do appreciate your presence. One of the, one of the big projects and priority for us is hearing from all of the ARS that helped run this school, and you're certainly a part of that, so it's important for us to have those open lines communications of welcome and thank you, and to be a little funny, we're looking forward to it, so that I. Welcome, Joe, and, you know, of course, we're thinking of the Brinleys. Good luck tomorrow. I also wanted to give a shout out to Parents Square. I've gotten lots of great feedback from other parents saying how much they love it. They love having all the information in one place, so if they have to go back to look for something, they're not looking for an email. They're just going right in and finding what they need. And so I think that that's been a great place to place all of our communication outward to the.
Welcome, Joe. I want to wish everyone a great start tomorrow, administrators, teachers, and students. And that's really about it. You guys will cover it.
All right, I'll keep you short.
Keep you short.
Joe, congratulations, and thank you for stepping up to the plate, you will. Nick, okay, I already mentioned it, and I'm looking forward to a new year, and hopefully, much better here. You know, you're talking to us, really got my vote counted, so thank you. For 2021 school season, to 2022, I think everybody, I think all the new teams. It's a good thing, we're going in the right direction, and hopefully, this pandemic, we can continue where we are right now as a school district, and we're getting better, so that's why, I think that's what everybody's hoping for. Amy made a great point with this Parents Square. I got to be honest with you, I'm starting to get more texts from this Parents Square, I do my own wife. That's telling me that it's all working wonders, but I think it's awesome, and you can click on it, it's right there. So you definitely froze through last year, and I think the great line of education, they were both kind of white by any means, but you say it. It's, it's wonderful, so. No other major reports, Tom making, we're thinking about you and your family, so good luck with the surgery, and I'm sure we'll get up there. Thank you.
All right. I too want to welcome Joe, and thank you for volunteering. I'm sure you don't know what you got into, but none of us have to do. I attended yesterday's opening session for the teachers. It was, it was great. To see all those people room together was just incredible, really overwhelming. And, you know, and I know they had a great day, they kicked it off like they normally do with the, the link crew leaders cheering everybody in, and it was nice to see excited faces, and even though I put it was masked, you could still see smiles and excitement at school year, so. We do, you know, we have high hopes for a successful year and that we can continue along in some, some aspect of normalcy. Let's, you know, we'll see how things go in our community. And I too wish everyone the best of luck. And Nick, thank you for coming. We do appreciate it, and I agree with what Amy said. We'd love to hear from, from all of our partners and everyone involved. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special education and personnel.
All in favor?
I, I.
Oppose or adjourn?